Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order at 1 o'clock PM. There is a quorum, Commissioner Shannon and Commissioner Watkins are here and we're going to do the flags for them.
Aye.
Okay, 2.0 additions and revisions to the agenda. We have a few. We're going to add 5.2 approval of the Oregon Behavioral Health Deflection Program contract. 5.3 approval of a delegate authority authorized to execute the contract for the sheriff's satellite station remodel project and lease. And 5.4 approval of the 24, 2024 Summer Work Experience Program with business only. I'm going to move 3.0, the correspondence and public comment to behind 6.0 announcements. Okay, we got 4.0 consent agenda.
To approve the consent agenda.
Aye, second. It's been moved in second to approve the consent agenda. And we will consider appointment of Kelly Smith as a Gillum County Budget Officer for the fiscal year 24, 25 budget. Consider approval of May bills pending review by Commissioner Watkins. All those in favor?
So I would say it should, we are going to make the appointment. We are going to be approved of the May bills.
Yeah.
Not considered.
Sorry.
I would.
I stand corrected, so. No more discussion?
No.
Okay. All in favor?
Is that person in the room? Because I don't know what they look like.
Yes.
Kelly Smith?
Oh.
Right back.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, new business, consider approval of the Mormon Cricket Abatement with OSU extension, Jordan Maylie, OSU.
Triple waters. I just want to make sure. In case you're like me.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Been working on the Mormon Cricket Abatement for the last seven years. And while the numbers here look encouraging, we're seeing low numbers, but we're also seeing that wasn't favorable for emergence and moving around and things like that, so. So far, so good, but we're not, we're not counting on that to hold true. We'll just see. Hopefully ODA will be here in another. Well, I asked him this week, so we'll see. And find out if, once it warms up, if they become active, then we'll know that we're going to have to deal with them this year.
Is it normally later? Is this later than usual?
Yeah, because of the cold windy wet spring, yeah. Yeah, usually they're out and about and we, we know what we've got, but this year not, so. Okay, so the first page was, I went to Nathan and asked him what our current budget balance was, and so we currently have the $105,000 that was previously appropriated. And then in working with Liz on the next year's budget, I requested 123,500. I'd noticed since then that I made a slight math error. And we are, there's another 30, $3,375 that would need to be added to that amount if that's acceptable, so.
So. And I think I talked to Kelly about putting 140 in that cricket. With budget.
Yeah, we'll see. I mean, just about 20 minutes ago about the budget information, so we'll see.
Okay.
How it all comes together.
Yeah, but I think I did relay that to you, didn't I?
Okay, good, so we're, we should be in good shape.
Just in case chemical costs and everything goes.
Yeah.
Scrap high, so.
So that's great. What's odd about the whole Mormon Cricket Control budgeting is that we end up straddling several fiscal years. And so in this case, the 105,000 that we have right now will get us the chemicals we need, get that ordered, we should see that within a week. Because once, once we know what the situation is and we know that we have to fly, it all has to happen very quickly, because they have several growth stages that we can get them at. And if they get beyond that, we're not going to control them, so it's all, timing is really critical, which I appreciate meeting today about this. So that's great on the budget side. Develop the RFPs to solicit bids on the control and the chemicals. And so that's the one is this sheet. And of the we requested proposals from three entities. Yeah, it's the shoulder and. Oh, it's on the flip side, sorry. I did double sided on your guys'. Check that one right there. It's the one, maybe right on top. See if I can recognize the.
Your offset with you.
Okay, so you're looking at the one for the chemicals. And we sent out the RFP 2, 3 potential bidders. And we received one bid back. And fortunately, this is a company that we have worked with in the past, so it's not like we're breaking anybody in on what our, our logistics are. So typically what Moore County Grain Growers has done is that they not only get the chemical into us, but they deliver it to the airport where it's being used. So they're, they're a great partner and their bid is consistent with what they've been in the past, so no big surprises there. Because when you do the, the, when I developed the budget estimate for Elizabeth, I had to kind of figure out where we might end up in terms of bids and stuff like that, so. Okay, then the next one is the RFP for the aerial application of the chemicals, that's a long sheet. We've got it right there, Zach. And on the flip side is the, this is very detailed, I should back up a little bit. The RFP is very detailed because we had to tighten things up significantly because of concerns about safety, wind farm, crew safety, public personnel, road department personnel being out there, so. Basically spell this out, or anyone responding to the RFP, that they had to meet all of these criteria. And including having an accident free aviation record for the past 10 years. So I think we've covered most of the bases on that, and I think we're in pretty good shape. We're also very prescriptive about how we expect this to be applied. In other words, we put the recipe, so to speak, on what they will be doing, because sometimes someone will bid on something and then they'll cut corners. And that's the only way they can do it for a lower bid, so we basically made sure that that wasn't going to happen, so. John Boyer with Guard Aviation is selling his business to ASAP Flying Services. John is still going to be very much a part of the process, he's transitioning this new company into his business. And so it's, it's a relief to know that we're not going to have to break so many new in, in terms of, you know, wind turbine locations, things like that, because there's a lot of components to this that you have to, you have to really be aware of. We have to know where beehives are, we have to know a lot of things, so. So John's been a great partner. And he has reassured me that he will work with ASAP on the aerial application, make sure it's done. John in the past worked out a deal with Ardio at Three Mile Canyon Farms. They use the Ardio airstrip because they have a filling station that allows them to quickly cycle multiple planes through. So not only is John flying, he had two other pilots in previous years, so. Last year, between the deciding where the management areas were and actual completion of the application was a week and a half. So, I mean, they've got this nailed, they've got it all dialed in, and so it's going really well. So I think the thing at this point is, what I need to know is, can I contact the successful proponents in response to the RFPs and give them the green light? And then the other question that I'm still looking for guidance on is mentioned the two fiscal years, we have enough to buy the chemicals, that's not a big deal, we've got 105,000 in there. It won't quite cover the cost of the, the cost of the aircraft. So I've got to talk to the pilot and say, can you bill us in two billing cycles? So that we can cover most of what you're going to incur in this year and then what we can't cover in next year's fiscal budget, so.
Okay.
But I'll work with them on that.
Well, the number's definitely a full fund, right?
Yeah.
Okay, sure, sounds good. Any questions?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Your motion or run? I move to approve the awards for Mormon Cricket Abatement with OSU, Jordan Maylie Extension for the amount of 140,000.
Yeah, it would have been. So that's, that's what it would be.
It was 123 plus the 37, 3700 we was talking about.
Yeah, is that for next year though, Jordan? Did he?
Yeah, we're, this is for next year.
This is, I, I was understanding this is what he's going to do right now.
Yeah, but he's got 105,000 in.
So he's going to have to split that out.
He's going to have to split this up, this is the total of the two, and then what happens next year will be, he's going to use a little bit of the 140 to get through this year. And then he'll have the funding in place depending on when it happens next year.
Okay. But I don't think, we, we can't approve anything more than the 105, right? Because that's all that's in the budget.
Yeah.
For this year.
Yeah. Yeah, that, we'd have to, that has to go through the budget process.
Okay. Okay, so do we want to re?
Yeah, we, it's already been brooped.
Okay.
So all he has to do is make sure that his billing can be split.
Okay. I second it.
Well, there is anything to. It's already there. It's already been brooped.
Okay. All right, so we don't actually have to make a motion. Okay. Moving on.
What funding is this? This is from last year's funding, budget, funding.
We're just, we're approving that award.
I would.
It's in the cricket, Mormon Cricket funding?
It's on line nine, level 199.
Okay.
We will move to approve the awards for the Mormon Cricket Abatement.
Yeah, but we don't have to worry about the amount. Okay, so let's go ahead and do that. You did that, I say second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Sorry, conclusion? Okay, we're going to move on to going to move on to 5.2 approval of the Oregon Behavioral Health Deflection Program contract. So, Pat?
So that was all forwarded to you, and I just want to approve the contracts and give you the authority to sign it.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
So you want to elaborate a little bit, this was out of the measure 110?
Yeah. House Bill 4002, which was fixed for about measure 110, which Gillum County signed up with 22 other counties to get into the setup of deflection program early, which is, deflection is a new system to deflect drug addicts into treatment without a citation. All that correct, Gary?
Without any criminal charges.
Without any, yeah.
And you?
Because we, within the Senate bill for House Bill 4002, there is a criminalization piece that has gone into that bill that would go down a different road. So it's a program that would run in unison with it, that could be utilized without criminalizing the individual in treatment.
Okay, so I'm having a little difficulty understanding it, as long as they take the deflection, there's no criminal charge if they refuse the deflection?
That's up to the law enforcement.
Okay. So is that money that would be coming to our county to help?
This first tranche, it's going to come in two tranches, and the first tranche is to set up, to use as a method to set up a system, whatever that is, we haven't identified exactly what that program will look like in Gillum County yet. This money will help us get there.
Okay.
And then there's also money in there for a program coordinator that will fit into all the pieces as they develop that program.
So do we know how much money is?
75,000 in this tranche.
Okay.
And then there'll be another one before the first of the year. And my understanding was that they gave us two weeks to do the grant app, which we did.
Yeah.
Now, this is the contract for that grant, and they would like to have those funds out by the end of the month. To stay in the.
So just kind of ask them one question. So I remember you talking about it, Pat, and you said that so our police officers pull somebody over and they can choose to deflection and they won't get a ticket, right?
That is.
They will, and, and, oh, I think it was about, you were talking about the transport, you were writing a grant because the state would cover the transportation costs to transport them to.
No, that, none of that's been developed yet, that's what the money's for, is to develop what that, what that whole program will look like.
Okay.
There's no program yet.
Okay. But you have.
And there's a chance that program could get into Tri-County piece. So we're not there yet.
We've met, we've talked, but we have a better program together, and we have talked to other agencies in the region, joining forces, but the budget has been solidified.
Okay, so this is just to get it started.
This is just to be able to accept.
Okay.
That's something.
Right, okay.
To be able to do this.
So I would move to approve the Oregon Behavioral Health Deflection Program contract and authorize County Commissioner Leah Watkins to sign and execute it.
I second. Discussion?
Then here.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Moving on. Okay. 5.3 is approval of a delegate authority authorizing to execute the contract for sheriff satellite station remodel project and lease, and that's in Arlington. And I received an email this morning from the county attorney. And she said, hello commissioners, I understand that a special meeting is scheduled for tomorrow, Wednesday. I suggest that the court take action during the special meeting to delegate authority to either the sheriff or Commissioner Watkins to award to execute the contract of the sheriff's satellite station remodel project and lease, since a new court member isn't likely to be seated by June 5th, when the intent to award is set to be issued. If this authority is not delegating before a quorum is lost, both award and contract execution will need to wait for a quorum to be seated, so. I'm assuming that you reached out to the attorney regarding this, did you want to talk about that project, Gary?
I will, just because, I mean, we've got three proposed building projects at Gillum County. This one's to the point where the bids are going out. And I sent the bid packet out to four or five contractors. And our preview walkthrough is tomorrow. But those timelines have been set and advertised, May 28th bids will be opened. June 5th was scheduled to award a bid, approve the lease with the North Gillum County Road Fire Protection District, where the project is, and approve funding. So I am the project manager on, on this. So I, I mean, I'm happy to be that person, but I think we'd probably be better off if Commissioner Watkins was appointed, since I'm the project manager. Been involved.
I would agree.
So anyway, the project's in the process. I guess the only question is going to be the, the funding and when that can be approved.
And, and attorney's drawing up the lease for you between?
Uh, yeah, she sent the first draft to me, I've got it back to her, so I'm expecting early next week. Hopefully I can get it to.
And is the North Fire District, have they looked at it?
They have not, I was going to send it to Sky and, and Joe as soon as I get it back, so they have some preview time.
Okay.
So no, they haven't looked at it.
Okay. And try to execute all that at the same time then?
That's preferable, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we're still, because I don't, I think whatever contractor gets the award of bid, I don't think they're going to be able to start until after July. So August into fall, somewhere in there.
Yeah. Okay.
And it was the capital projects where the funding, what is that, capital investments?
I, I would believe so.
Is where the funding was to come from, but I don't think we're going to make it through this year's.
Okay. Okay.
So since you're going to be the delegate authority, I'm going to make the motion, huh?
Yeah. Might want to.
I move to approve the delegate authority Leah Watkins to execute the contract for the sheriff's satellite station remodel project and lease with North Gillum Fire District.
Okay. I second it. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to approve the delegate authority to Commissioner Watkins to execute the contract for the sheriff's satellite station remodel project and lease with the North Gillum Fire District. Discussion? Motion carries.
Did we, did we vote?
Oh, sorry. Do you want to vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. And then lastly, we have 5.4 approval of this 24 Summer Work Experience Program with Business Only. Amy?
Hello. Hi. So I've been working on our work experience program for the youth and historically the county court sets the hourly wage. And then I'll get contracts out to businesses. I was thinking they've all committed to at least being able to hire a youth for 20 hours a week. So I was figuring 20 hours at 10 weeks for the summer is about 200 hours. And the minimum wage right now is $13.20 through June 30th, and then it raises to $13.70 on July 1st. So I'm asking that we set the minimum, or set the hourly wage at the, I'm not wording this well, the minimum wage set by our state and authority to go ahead and execute contracts with the businesses so that we can get our kids working this summer.
So the only thing, Pat, that I, I had to talk to Amy about this. When you go online and look up the wage stuff, they talk about the Consumer Price Index, like for, for urban. And then, you know, the non-urbans are set at a dollar less. So that's why I worded it in the, I think the contract she's got, say, 1320 and 1370, is that correct?
Yeah, some of the rural counties are set less than the, like one over county.
Yeah, the urban, yeah.
So.
I had looked at Bulleye, I had looked at the Bulleye website for non-urban counties, what it is and what it's going to go up to.
It's 50 cents, been a 50 cent per year just for the last five years or something.
So that's how I came up with those numbers, was the.
That's from business too, so.
But I did, when I worded the, the motion, I, I.
I'm confused by the motion, but.
Yeah, I did it, I said to authorize it at the rates determined by the state of Oregon, just in case.
So, but that probably should say minimum rates, minimum wage rates.
Yeah.
Determined.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I move to approve the 2024 Summer Work Experience Program with local Gillum County businesses only and to authorize, authorize the minimum wage and hourly rates as determined by the state of Oregon.
Okay.
And I guess I just have one follow-up question. Will we need to have, will I need to have the contracts drawn up and signed and checks out by May 30th? Or will, okay, all right. Got it.
I have no clue.
Okay. Thank you.
And also, just on another note, this is only for the ones that are outside businesses and not county.
Not county intern programs.
We were uncertain.
Correct.
Where that would go, so we just decided we wouldn't go down that road, but. Because even if they go work out in the business, they're going to get paid, so.
Correct.
And we're not sure about, so. If anybody asks, that's why.
Because they're paid differently, our interns are paid on our pay schedule, whereas the businesses, we just cut them a check and they're paid for the summer. If the businesses choose, if the businesses choose to work them more, it comes out of the businesses' pocket, not out of our pocket, like we're committing to the 20 hours. So the contract just pays them for the 20 hours a week. And the businesses are committed to working the youth that much, so they will spend that money.
So we probably ought to amend that motion and also allow Amy to execute those contracts.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could do that.
Which I will do, so. Will you second the amendment?
Yep.
Thank you, commissioners.
Okay, I'm going to second it. Discussion? Okay, it's been moved and to approve the 2024 Summer Work Experience Program with the local Gillum County businesses only and to authorize a wage and hourly rate that's determined by the state of Oregon, minimum wage. And to authorize Amy Nation Juvenile Director to execute, what are they called? Sorry.
Gillum County Summer Work Experience Agreement.
Okay, it's an agreement.
With the businesses.
Okay. And to execute the agreements with the businesses. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Poor Mary. She's trying to do the minute. Okay, and then announcements, Pat?
I have nothing.
Okay. Um. Where's our list of people that want to speak?
I have to go to the smaller, the list.
Sure.
So in my consent agenda, you approve the May bills, I make the manager, do we have a plan for approving June? You know.
I, I have something I'll read during the. Okay. Which I guess I should do that now, sorry. Okay. As part of my comments, I'm going to say, I, I reached, received two emails. One was from Tara Davis. It says, hi, Leanne, Pat. I'm just emailing you guys about the meeting tomorrow, I was hoping it might be possible for us electeds to authorize normal and regular expenditures of our offices as previously approved by the county budget. I feel confident that we can cover payroll. That seems to be authorized by statute, I'm thinking of normal and ordinary bills in the course of business that are no, no more than what has been approved by offices' budgets. I think the county court could authorize this, I think it would also need to be subject to audit anyway. I did not want to bring it up in the middle of the meeting and cause more controversy, but does this sound like a workable idea? I have a really difficult time finding what Gillum. I have a really difficult time finding what Gillum County rules on anything actually are, as I get a lot of, this is what we've always done, but not very much of why or who authorized it. Or is it that pursuant to the statute, rule, or charter of what? So much fun. The biggest concern would be if someone chose to use the opportunity to embezzle. But that's why we stick to the ordinary, normal recurring bills that have been authorized by individual budgets. What do you think? Thanks, Tara. The other one was this morning from our county council. Hi Leah, I understand your trepidation and deviating from the normal practice of oversight and approval. However, these aren't normal times. All kidding aside, the county has obligations it needs to satisfy. Payroll, paying bills, and et cetera. And approving payment of obligations or delegating authority, as long as the funds being used to satisfy those obligations have been budgeted and are available. I don't see how there would be any personal liability for you for doing this. I can't speak to the political liabilities of this matter, but as an elected member of the county court, you have some responsibility to act in the best interest of the county. I know that this isn't particularly reassuring advice for you at this point, and I'm sorry for that. Please know if you have any questions or want to talk before your 1:00 PM meeting. Thanks, Lori. The other thing is, I'm looking at the ORS 203111, county governing body. The county court shall be the governing body and shall exercise general legislative authorities over all matters of county concern and shall consist of a county judge and two county commissioners, and a majority of those persons shall constitute a quorum. So I'm taking these under advisement. I'm gonna take some time to make a decision, because I've had other offices tell me that that I don't have that authority, so. But for right now, I have the authority to pay the bills in May pending approval, so. And we'll have our separation of duties regarding that, so. Another thing I had was, I met on April 30th with Jim Denson, Leah Shannon, and Paul Wilson. And we, Jim talked about the permit process, which has been about a 10-year process down there. They've already spent $900,000 for two permits and almost $2 million in attorney fees. We toured both of the sites. The permit is on the Kim Way side, and it's concerning the expansion over there. And Waste Management is concerned about the planning, which the planning was actually in negotiations currently, so I'm gonna have to look into, see where that was at. And there'll be an IG that goes along with that, which, you know, I don't, I don't know when that'll get. Because I know there was some talk about that they wanted a vehicle so they could drive up here once a week to do the business, so. I don't know, I got, I have to get ahold of that. Is it Carla? And then. So then I read the emails, and then I held a meeting May 1st with the elected officials, and and Kelly has graciously reached out to be the help with the budget and whatever else. Many of the employees offered help, so I'm trying to take them up on it. And mostly I've just been putting out fires, so. Everybody's gonna have to be extremely patient for right now, so.
I might add, having been reaching out to me and have a meeting scheduled with me on the 14th, and I will probably give them an update on the state of affairs in Gillum County, since I've been the liaison on all things renewable energy in the county for some time.
Is that on that, meaning Juniper project?
No idea, I think they've got several repowers they're looking at, and possibly some solar, and they have the Oregon Trail Solar.
But they are looking at a repower on that, meaning Juniper, aren't they?
Well, they're doing one.
Yeah.
And then they're looking at another one up there.
Okay.
So, I didn't tell, they've got a new guy that I'll meet and tell him directions.
Walsh is gone?
He's been gone.
Oh, he's been gone.
For over a year.
So he's not with the company at all? Okay. Okay, that's pretty much, I think, all I had. Jordan left before I gave him the moment cricket. So it looks like we have Peggy.
Well, everything is going so smoothly, I congratulate you. Because you, I heard you were very fearful. And I congratulate you on how well you're doing. And thank Pat for being here, so that we had a quorum. And I guess that's all I really wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, no other comment? I did read your email, so.
I was in court, sorry.
Okay. And do we have any, we may have to cancel our 13th meeting and just go with the. I did talk to Wally and told him that if we move to the 21st, it may be a long meeting, so.
A long lunch.
Yeah, I already thought about lunch and maybe some muffins for breakfast time.
We.
That's custom, but those things get.
With that, yeah.
Yeah, I'll take muffins and coffee, too.
We're just gonna get. We may, we may need dinner, too.
Can I just ask questions as you appear? Is there a possibility that the two of you could possibly hold another court session if the need arose? I'm just thinking of the building project at the fairgrounds. I don't know where the transportation building is, and I know there's a multitude of other things that are, you know, grants and different things that are, you know, just left severed. So is that a possibility? And I just.
I'm willing to help wherever I can until the recall certified, Gary. So if that happens to come up, or something comes up on whatever.
Yeah.
Once it's certified, and depending on what happens in the primary, we'll make a decision for that.
And just to.
And I think what I would do, Gary, is just do what I, I mean, we'll just have to call it a special meeting and make sure it goes out within the required time for a special meeting, too.
I feel like with the progression, as Kelly progresses on the budget and things, there's gonna be things that's like, well, where is this process? And what funding was said to be and where it's from? Kind of issues.
Well, and I will just tell you, I have a ton of emails sitting in my inbox that I looked at them briefly and then just moved on to the next one, but I need to go back through and start just slowly going through them and figuring out where, because Liz gave me detailed, you know, where this is at, what needs to be signed, where it has to be filed, and and, but it's, at this point, it's so much that I'm just having to I'm just gonna have to filter through.
I totally get that, and I'm not saying anything. And then just as an update, the elected officials will be meeting every Tuesday at noon. And basically, all we've done is just to keep our services going and stuff. We've outlined a priority list, and so each time it's basically, what can we do? Basically, to help the county as a whole and keep services sort of moving and whatnot, but you know, we're there, and I think we had a very productive meeting yesterday outlining some things. I'd be appreciative to getting together today.
And I think if we can, when we do the budget stuff, if we can make sure we get the departments to come in that day and answer questions that, you know, Wally and Brad and I and Sherry might have. And then the other thing is, Sherry Wilkins has offered to help me with looking at the operational and those capital and special project grants, so. But I have another meeting today, so I told her that when we had to move this, the one, I was like, I can't. I don't have enough bandwidth today to do that, so. I'll get together with her probably sometime next week and go through those, so. It's probably best now, if we just put out a notice to cancel the meeting on the 13th, I'll let the budget committee know.
Yeah, I did get, like I said, 20 minutes before this meeting. Liz had sent over everything she thought, so I haven't looked at it yet. It's pretty complete, as far as just scrolling through on my phone a minute ago.
Yeah.
So that, that's good, but I am going to be out of town this weekend, so I won't have any time to work on it.
Yeah.
So I think.
I figured we were.
Pushing it back is probably best at this point.
Yeah. And we always could, like, I know one time, I think when we did the budget, we tentatively set another date if we thought was gonna.
Yeah, if we, as long as we don't close the meeting, I think, and I'll have to double-check the rules on this, but I think as long as we don't close that day's meeting, we can resume it at a later date, I've already noticed.
Okay.
So if it ends up being too long of a day, we can call it and reconvene in a couple days to finish up.
Ben?
I was just curious, do you have a budget calendar and a schedule so that you'll know how you're gonna get there?
We are tentatively using the budget schedule that we are tentatively using the budget schedule we previously put out.
Okay.
And the advertisement went out for the days that we had.
So that'll get us there, we stay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we just might, I think it sounds like we're probably gonna go ahead and cancel the first meeting, there were two budget meeting schedules, we canceled the first one, we should have stayed.
Because I believe last year, we, did we only have one, Wally?
I think so.
I think we got, yeah, I think.
Well, we might have to.
No, I think we went for the one.
Did we do one and then came back and let the we did one with the department heads that did it, and then we came back and had another quick one?
Or I know, I know the year before that you guys did one where you went through and then you had department heads come later.
I thought that was last year.
So.
The moment can help Kelly and her organization to better evolve the budget meeting this way, too.
I mean, some of the departments are pretty straightforward, but some of them are you know, might, might have some questions that we or any of the department heads want to come in and talk about their.
Yeah, there's usually people that like to say things.
Yeah. So we just need to invite them in and have them come do that. Yeah. Yeah, so, so right now, I think we're just calculating everything at the what the union.
Yeah, the unions is three and a half, so we're going to shoot for right now, just assume three and a half across the board. And then at any point, if we do need to go back into a supplemental budget, once there's a, you know, once the new court is in place and we're back to three people up there at the table, we can do some supplementals to fix, tie up loose ends and.
But we need to do the supplemental at least for the well, and probably when you get looking at it, you're gonna find that there are areas, but the, I know the public health, we're gonna have to do a supplemental on it, because the modernization fund was like $150,000 more they gave us than what we budgeted.
It's gonna be a supplemental issue on deflection, too. 75 coming in on that.
Yeah, and the deflection that Pat just mentioned is that we didn't expect that's coming in, we'll need to do that.
And is that gonna come in before the end of the year?
75 should come in before the end.
Are we gonna spend it before the end of the year? I want to.
Yeah, I don't know, we don't have a plan yet.
Okay, if we're not gonna spend it this year, then we can break in extra money without.
We could spend some of it, I don't know. Who knows?
Yeah, I don't know.
I'm totally leaning for that meeting on it. After this, I'm headed to San Juan. But I mean, so I'll know more about that tomorrow.
So did they, did they send out a letter of intent to an organ contract, or?
Should all be in that email.
I'll have to go back, okay.
Yeah, should all be in that email.
Okay. Rob?
I have a question, really looking for some clarification. Pioneer received some additional funding at the office for April 10th meeting to help us fund for developers that are waiting to begin construction on 14 new single-family rentals in the county. And these folks are now basically in limbo, but I understand was that money was not coming from a budget, it was coming from the Economic Development Fund or something? Is that?
I think it was the housing part of the Economic Development Fund, but I'd have to go back, because we talked.
I think was there gonna have to be a, something executed that did you, did you ever sign anything?
She never signed anything.
Okay. I honestly, I'm just gonna have to look into that, Rob, and let you know, so.
Okay, because again, we're right at the beginning of the season here right now, and it'd be a shame to lose that opportunity to get these things.
Yeah, because I know.
Funds are approved, it's just a matter of, yeah.
I think when we approved it, it was approve it with, and authorizing the county judge to execute the agreements, probably, wasn't it?
Probably.
That's what I.
You go back and look at the, you look at the.
So, and you, and you don't, you, you're pretty sure you didn't execute any agreements, so.
I know, she never signed anything, I wish.
Which that was a meeting in April, is that correct?
And it would have to go to the attorney.
Down, and she said, I'll execute it. Liz.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we'll have to, she would have gone to the attorney with it.
Yeah, that, yeah, it would have to, it would have to went to the attorney and through the process.
Reason was, was she said we'd get you the fine by 30th of April, and that was, you know, prior to the recall, but that clearly hadn't come in and had happened, so I thought she did it there.
Well, I will just say in her defense that we have been, we're extremely short-staffed right now. I mean, we're like, no staff. So just getting, you know, everything, I mean, from sitting in that spot right now, it's, I'm, seriously, I'm just putting out fires, so. And I understand your concern, and I will definitely look into it and be, get ahold of you and see what we can do, so.
Okay.
But that's about all I can say at this point. So, anybody else? I'm gonna adjourn the meeting at 1:47.